All right, it's nine o'clock. We'll call to order the August ninth meeting of the Celine County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Mr. Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Affirmative. If we could all stand for a flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now in the portion of our meeting where it's a citizen's input, if there's any, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to election item number one.
Preliminary canvas. So before you, I have given you a list of the provisionals and the rules for canvassing through the election standards from Secretary State's office. I want to start out actually with just a couple of challenges that were met in this election, which I think are pretty interesting. So we had redistricting this year. So we went from 57 precincts in Celine County to 97, 80 of which have registered voters in them. So we went from, we would normally have 120 ballot styles, we had 240 different ballot styles across the county. So that kind of gave us a little bit of a challenge. We also had a constitutional amendment on the ballot, so that changed some of the rules for the people coming out to vote. You know, if they were unaffiliated, libertarians who don't normally vote in a primary were able to come out and vote on the constitutional amendment. So we had an increased turnout. We had currently, before the provisionals, almost 47% turnout, which is actually the highest that we've seen in a primary since 1990. That was 48. So that's been an increased turnout. Another challenge is, we haven't had a constitutional amendment on a primary since 1986 in the state of Kansas. So this is, you know, was really new and it was interesting and we had a lot of great election workers who did a fabulous job. Lots of new people that came out and took part in this election. So it was good to see the turnout. And then statewide, we had somewhere around 925,000 voters come out, which is the highest ever in the state in our history. So I just, that's all interesting and I wanted to put that out there for the public because I think that's, it's great to see people come out. So anyway, we will get on to our Celine County and what we had. So we had a total of 357 provisionals and I'll leave it up to the board. If we want to go through each one and the recommendation, or if we just want to go through them as a whole and then just vote at the end, whichever you would prefer to do, we can do that. Is there a consensus on one way or another if we want to go through each line item?
Yeah, whatever works for you, Jamie.
Okay. All right.
Jamie, I've got to ask again, Elvis stands for?
Election Voter Information System.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So yes, I do put the Elvis reason on there, but that's what it is in the state of Kansas, our central voter registration system. So, okay, well, we will start with the first one that we have listed there. And these are people that have moved within county. So they moved within county, got the correct ballot, so there's no partial count. So there's 133 of those. And the recommendation, based on the statute listed there, is to count those.
I remember last year, I think we just made one motion at the very end. Am I wrong, Mr. Chair?
I think we did each one, but we can go through all of the yes recommendations and then make one at the end if that's what you prefer.
It's up to the chair, but...
I think that will work the best. If we have a question or something, we can pull that one aside and address it.
All right.
Okay, I guess I'm confused then. So we're going to, this is a canvas today, and then what is Thursday?
So this is a preliminary canvas for you guys to vote on the different ones. I have a three-person board upstairs that will count these votes. And then Thursday, we will compile all that information to present to you and then you will certify the results as the final. That way, we're not staying here for several hours while they're going through all of the partial counts and the votes.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Good idea.
Because that's where I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, because it's going to take a long time to process those and then to total them. So we have the precinct-by-precinct reports for you to sign. So the next one is, I had 11 that moved within the county. They went to the wrong polling location, but none of those ballots were different, so there are no partial counts. So the recommendation is to count those. The next one is a move within county. The voter went to their former precinct. So if you move within 30 days of an election, you can vote at your former precinct and that count. So the recommendation is to count that one. The next one is three clerical errors. We had three voters that were unaffiliated that wanted to affiliate and they were processed as a provisional and they shouldn't have been because that is, they can affiliate on election day. So it was just a clerical error on the part of, on our office's part. The next one is replacement ballot. A replacement ballot, if someone can come in, and this one, for instance, I know is their, their mailbox got left open, the ballot got wet, so they came in to get a replacement ballot. That is not a provisional. They were able to return that to us. So it was accidentally worked as a provisional and should have been. So that should count. So that's a clerical error on our part. I have nine that were registered voters. The election workers weren't able to find them in the poll book, but they were in the poll book. But we always train to never turn a voter away, so if they can't find them or if they have a question on someone, then they always vote them provisionally. They weren't able to find them on election day, but when we went back and looked, they were actually in there. They were just unable to locate them. So those nine should count. We have 15 registered voters that had a name change. And according to those statutes listed there, those should count. They didn't get it updated prior to the close of registration. I have 25. The Elvis reason is voter voted in advance and then at the polling location. So they were sent an advance ballot. They did not return that ballot, so they came in and voted provisionally. Obviously, once you're issued a ballot, that vote is then provision, the next, your vote is provisional, so that we can verify we didn't get another ballot. And we did not on those 25. So the recommendation is to count those. We had three people who had failed to provide voter ID when they went to the polls. They did cure that by bringing in their ID prior to canvas, so those are able to be counted. So that's a total of 201 provisionals with a recommendation of yes.
Okay, and you have stated the statute off to the side that each one of those fall into.
Yes.
And we're looking for a motion then to advance forward, our motion would be something to the effect of, that we accept, that we move, that...
That you accept the recommendation.
That we would accept that recommendation for those 201?
Mm-hmm.
Unless somebody, if you can decipher that motion, that's what it is.
Is that your...
That I move that we accept the 201 provisional votes. Is that correct? As recommended by the county clerk, county election officer?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. We approve the 201 provisional votes. Any comments from the commission? Comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five zero. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
The next item is one that we don't normally have, but it's an office clerical error. So this person moved within the county. They went to their correct polling location. However, there is a discrepancy on what they wrote on whether they, which ballot they gave them. So I would ask that, we have the canvas board, because we have a three-person bipartisan board upstairs, verify which ballot is in there. If it is ballot, they're all numbers. So if it's one ballot, that should be counted. If it's a different ballot, then it's a partial count. So not sure how to...
You're saying they could have been given the wrong ballot at election time?
Yeah, we, they wrote two, the election worker wrote two different numbers and we couldn't determine which one they gave them for sure. But, so it's either a partial count or a full count. So, but the reason, moving within the county, is an acceptable reason to count the ballot. We just don't know what ballot's inside there because we can't open ballots. So we can't open the provisional envelope. So the recommendation is to have the canvas board verify which ballot is in there and either count it fully or partially, because that's a clerical error on our part, not on the voter.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed in second, that we allow the canvas board to open the ballot to see if it's a full ballot or a partial count. Any comments from the public? Bring it back to the commission for action then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We'll move on to the partials.
Okay, so the partial, the ones that are to be partially recommended. The first one is voted at the wrong polling location. So either they went to the wrong location, you know, they insisted to vote at one, or we sent them to the wrong place. It's just a caveat of different ones. We recommend that nine of those be partially counted on the races that would be the same. Then I have 14 that moved within county and they went to the wrong polling location. And I recommend those be partially counted. And then we have six that were issued the wrong ballot, that recommend be partially counted, that were a clerical error on our part. So...
Okay, is it known at that time that they are at the wrong polling place?
Yes.
And they're instructed that here is your correct one, you can go there and have a complete ballot, or you can vote here and only partial?
Yes, that's how we train the election workers and that's what they're informed. And a lot of the election workers call us to verify because in our poll pads, when someone goes to the wrong location, it says wrong polling location. They are, can't even check them in on the electronic poll pad. So it will tell them, it has every voter in the county, and it'll say, you know, here's your correct location. And then the voter can choose to stay there and vote and have a provisional done, or they can choose to go to their regular polling place.
And on the six that were issued the wrong ballot, what happened there? I mean, how does that happen? They come into, they were at the, they were at the correct polling place and given the wrong ballot?
Right, six of those, yes. So another thing that I didn't mention, and I should have, with redistricting and the constitutional amendment both this year, we went from two to six ballots per location to three to 21 different ballots at locations. So you have a place that has 21 different ballots. You know, we instruct them to call us to verify, but if they did not, or if they just picked up the wrong one and issued the wrong one, that happens unfortunately. But we are able to still partially count a majority of those ballots. Because the only thing that's different countywide for the most part is the commission district, the Kansas House, and then if it's out in the townships, obviously, your township people, or your township clerk might be on there, different township clerk. So everything else nationally and statewide and the constitutional amendment are the same. So my recommendation would be to count, partially count those six.
So moved. Second.
That's fine. It's removed in second. Any comments, questions from the public? Please state your name.
Good morning. Tina Behringer.
Good morning.
In reference to the ballots that were given out wrong, my husband and I were registered Republican. We were given Democrat ballots. And we caught the mistake and asked for a paper ballot. So I would like to know how, how did that happen?
Were you on the express vote, you were given the wrong one?
On the machine, yeah, when it registered.
Yeah.
When it scanned it.
Yeah, then they touched the wrong, the voter, or the election worker would have touched the wrong one instead of scanning the receipt to choose the wrong one.
Two of us, side by side, two different workers. How did that happen?
Well...
And then the next person following us was having the same issue.
Yeah, and I actually was made aware of that and we called that location and it went over it again because they have all been trained and are familiar with that. So, no, we called that location and had that conversation with the supervising judge, and then she did with her election workers.
Okay.
Can I ask a question of you, Tina?
Yes.
It became evident to you pretty quickly that you had the wrong ballot. Were they able to correct that and get you the correct ballot?
I just asked me, I vote by a paper ballot, and they said yes.
Okay, all right, good. Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we did have a motion and a second already, correct? All right, bring it back to the commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And so we'll move into the section for a recommendation of no. We had 32 people who were not registered in the state of Kansas at all. The close of registration was July 12th at 8:00 p.m. and those were not registered by that time, so recommendation is to not count those. We have 67 that were not registered in Celine County by the July 12th deadline, so the recommendation is to not count those. We have one that failed to provide photo ID and they did not provide it prior to this morning. We have one that voted in advance and then voted at the polling location. We had already accepted their advance ballot and counted it, therefore, we could not count their provisional. We have one that voted in advance provisionally and also voted in advance on election day provisionally, so we're unable to count their second ballot. We had one voter that, the Elvis reason is moved out of county, didn't re-register, but they voted in Celine County, but they actually live in Lincoln County because they work here. We had a primary-only Elvis reason. We had 16 people who were registered, a party, wanted a different party ballot than what they were registered. So we have to vote them provisionally and those cannot count because the deadline to change your party was June 10th. And then we had one advance voter, the voter signed another voter's envelope, so we cannot count that one. And then we had six ballots that were received after the deadline. So ballots that were mailed to our office, advanced ballots, can be postmarked on election day and received by Friday. These were postmarked after election day or received after Friday. So we can't count those.
I got one quick question.
Mm-hmm.
General information. On the voter was not registered, the 32 that were not registered in Kansas, so they couldn't have been registered in Celine County, you register in your county, correct?
Right.
So they weren't registered in Celine County either?
Right. They were not registered in Kansas at all. Sometimes people want to know that. That's the only reason I split that out, is they want to know how many are new registrants and how many are just moved within the, in the state. And so that's why I split that out. The reason is the same.
Okay, but that 67 is a separate number than the 32?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, quick question here. I mean, this voter signed another voter's envelope, and I'm just guessing, that's probably my wife. No, it was one of those things where she's the caregiver for her mother and her mother votes, puts it in this envelope, and my wife signs it. But my wife is a voter also, so we go out and we vote. So is that, is that there illegal? Is that what this one is?
Well, this one is, I know what this one is, and I'll explain in just a second. But the rule is that if someone is actually physically unable to sign, they can have someone sign the advanced envelope for them and it's section three of the advanced envelope. There's three sections on the back. They can do that and that'd be, that'd be perfectly legal. There is nothing wrong with that. We would count that ballot. However, this situation is a husband-wife, we're both issued advanced ballots. The husband's envelope was returned, but the wife signed it, so we don't, and she didn't return her ballot. So we don't know if this is her ballot, this is his ballot. We don't have any idea and we have to be able to figure that out.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we take the county clerk's recommendation and deny the 126 provisional votes that are here.
Second.
All right, it's removed in second that we deny the 126 provisionals that are listed. Any comments from the public? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, Jamie.
And the last item on there is just information purposes. We had, we mailed out on July 13th everyone that had requested a ballot. Forty of those came back with, as bad addresses, so they were not voted. They just came back through the post office as non-deliverable.
Do you try to trace those at all?
We will after the election, yes.
And you'll notify them that...
Yeah, we have to, if we get a new address, whether out of state or out of county, we have to send them what's called a confirmation notice. They have to sign to get, the voter actually has to sign to get their name removed out of Celine County's rolls. So until we have that, they'll stay on our rolls. But yes, we will notify them and try to get that remedied.
All right. Thank you. I guess we'll see you Thursday morning, get this all tallied up. We now move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of CKMHC Safer and Healthier Grant Program, approval of the Slana Grace Subgrante Agreement, approval of accounts payable as presented, approval of public form as presented. Any commissioners with questions or comments to the agenda?
I would, I would have a question. Perhaps the administrator can fill me in here, but there's 17 pages on this Slana Grace Subgrante Agreement, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it. This money, I believe it was $80,000, or is that the correct, somewhere in that neighborhood? And this money is coming from the recovery funds from the government. Is that, am I stating that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. This was part of the agenda item that was before you last Tuesday, and then this is, you sort of discussed it at that time. This is just the follow-up paperwork.
So it has nothing to do with our budget?
Correct.
It has to do with their following the prescribed way of doing things through the Recovery Act?
American Rescue Plan, yeah.
Good question. Any other comments?
Move approval?
Second. Moving second, we approve the consent agenda. Public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now move into our action items. Item number one.
RFA 175-22 Corrections Hiring Retention Incentive with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Morning Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am tag teaming with the sheriff here as well. So for several years, we've been faced with... So for several years, we've been faced with recruiting challenges for corrections officers. We're currently recruiting for three vacancies. We haven't even been able to touch the fourteen new corrections officer positions that were approved for January twenty twenty-two. And then if approved during the twenty twenty-three budget process, there'll be an additional ten corrections officer positions that will need to be filled. More and more employers are include, and including Saline County departments, are providing some early increased wages and hiring retention incentives. The proposed entry level pay for a corrections officer one, should the W S U study be approved during the budget process, will increase that rate by three dollars and five cents per hour to get that starting wage closer to the market as of the, the study that was conducted earlier this year. We would like to implement an increased hiring incentive for the remainder of twenty twenty-two. And the incentive would help us get us closer to that market wage and also provide some additional incentive to attract talent for the jail. We are requesting a temporary change in the hiring incentive for corrections officers from fifteen hundred dollars to five thousand dollars to continue through December twenty-two. We're also requesting a five thousand dollar retention incentive for all existing staff in the jail division of the sheriff's office in recognition of their dedication and make a statement of support to all of these employees continuing to work in the jail. The alternatives for action would be to approve the request to increase the current hiring incentive to five thousand dollars for new corrections officers through December twenty-two and provide a five thousand dollar retention incentive for all existing jail staff. Two would be to deny the request and provide an increase, deny the request to provide an increase and an incentive for retention. And then three would be to direct staff to propose a different option. Our recommendation is to approve the request to the temporary increase in the hiring incentive to five thousand dollars and provide a five thousand dollar retention incentive to all current jail staff. If approved, staff would implement a plan that provides for the most efficient payroll processing, which could include either a per-pay period or monthly installments for both incentives for the remainder of twenty twenty-two. There are currently seventy-three eligible staff for this with a total expense of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Due to the current staff shortages, existing salary dollars are available for, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to fund this hiring and retention incentive. And that would be paid through September through December if approved.
As you know, this is not, this is not a new issue for us. And Marilyn and I have been almost on a daily basis trying to figure out how we can get staff hired in this place. You know, we've done Facebook and newspaper ads and we've done TV ads. And we've put it out on billboards, we've got billboards up, I don't know if you've seen those. We did come to you guys and we do have the referral bonus for the county employees that can send us some people our way. And we have had a handful from that. I think one of the things to note is she wants to give it, or we've, we discussed and we agree that we should probably include the people that already work there, sixteen of these people that are working in the jail now, we've hired in the last, since, in the last year and a half. So we have not, we haven't hired one position of the ones that, that you guys approved this year. And as we all know, there's a new facility going up. I need to have the staff on board to staff that facility. Last thing I want to do is open a new jail that I can't staff. And this isn't something new, this is a, this is a problem not just for us. Riley County has also implemented the exact same thing, a five thousand dollar hiring bonus. The, the DOC in Ellsworth is a pretty direct competition for us. In the past, we've had several from DOC come to work for us, we've lost a few to them. It's back and forth, their wage and ours were always fairly competitive. It's, you know, when they were fourteen and fifteen, we were fourteen, fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour. We're now at sixteen, going, looking hopefully to go to nineteen if the W S U study's implemented. The DOC in Ellsworth is now paying twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. So they're feeling it and they're, they're, they're doing what they can to increase it. Sedgwick County's in the same boat, they went from nineteen dollars an hour to twenty-three fifty an hour just last week. So it isn't just here, but I do need these positions. And this is money that's in our budget to pay salaries and that's where I want it to go is for the salaries for these people. I think what, what, there's other positions in the county and I've heard people say, well, the other people aren't getting this incentive. Well, they don't have to work twenty-four seven, they're not dealing with people. During COVID, the staff, this group of staff members didn't get days off to stay home during COVID. And right now, we've got six positive cases in the jail. And they don't get to stay home and avoid that, they're in there dealing with them every day, giving them medications, changing their clothing. And five thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but it's less than what the salary increase would be. At three dollars an hour, if you put it over a year, that's six thousand and some change. So it's, it's kind of giving them a little bit, hopefully of what they'll see next year. We need to keep them, we need to keep the staff we have. But, you know, I'm hoping that that's a carrot that'll at least get people interested in this job. Hope you give it some consideration, guys.
Alright, I'll start, I have a few questions here. Some employees have already been hired and received the fifteen hundred dollar incentive, is that correct?
That's right.
And now they'll receive another five thousand?
Correct.
So they're going to get sixty-five hundred dollar incentive?
They would.
And you mentioned, uh, my other two questions, they're, the people who are eligible, the seventy-three eligible, who, who isn't eligible?
That's the correction staff, that's if, if we had every position filled, so that'd be the, the staff we currently have, including the ones that we.
Patrol?
No.
This is just corrections?
Just corrections, yes.
Okay, last question that I have. You mentioned the, the budget, three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And you have three hundred and seventy-nine thousand available. Is that three hundred and seventy-nine thousand available today or is that at the, at the end of this year?
Today, that doesn't count the positions, we wouldn't fill, whatever openings we don't have between now and the year would add to that number. But that's, that's currently.
So if, if you.
Unspent.
If this works, let's say some miracle, and you're able to fill your vacancies, there is money in your budget as budgeted.
To finish the year.
To finish the year.
Yes.
Well, let me first preface my statements that I'm, I'm pro law enforcement. I'm pro Sheriff's Department. I think everybody that's, that's been in tune with the county commission over the last six or seven years that we've been here knows that I'm pro sheriff, law enforcement. However, there's some things here that kind of leave me questioning what's going on. I, I'm, first of all, I'm in favor, I would be in favor of the five thousand dollar bonus to, incentive to hire. I'm not in favor of the five thousand dollar retention bonus. We just, didn't we just give a raise before the three dollars and five cents? Didn't we give a raise last year to the Sheriff's Department in addition to what everyone else got, Marilyn? Isn't that? There, there was a.
There was a three percent adjustment.
Yes, okay.
Twenty, for all employees, for the twenty twenty-two pay plan, that was for all employees.
I thought there was another additional bonus in there or, or pay increase for the, simply for the Sheriff's Department.
There was some great adjustments to, to try to bring them a little closer to market for corrections, for law enforcement positions. So there was a great adjustment to bring them a little bit closer to market, but that was before even the W S U market study.
The, the thing that, that I think is going to be a, a problem for us is if, if we were to go with that retention incentive is what about the other departments, you know, road and bridge, health department? Both of those have fifty employees or thereabouts or more. What, what, what's going to happen there? I mean, I've heard it over and over again, the esprit de corps is, is a situation that if one department gets a raise and the other department doesn't, that, you know, the morale becomes an issue. I'm, I'm in, I'm just not in favor of doing that all the way there. So that's, that's kind of where I stand. Jim asked the question regarding the eligible staff. So it doesn't say here, it just says, so in other words, if somebody has been there in the corrections department one month or twenty-five years, they're all going to get a five thousand dollar bonus.
Right.
I, I guess I can't, I can't buy into that part of it. I'm certainly in favor of the five thousand dollar incentive to hire. Tell me, when does that get paid? When is that going to affect? Do they have to be there for six months, a year, five years? What, what's the deal there?
As far as?
As far as when do they get paid the five thousand?
Well, it'd have to be paid out this year, it'd have to be paid out by the end of this year.
So in other words, they can come to work.
Budget.
Come to work, would be four months and get five thousand dollars. And quit on January first and they've got the five thousand.
Probably the, the thing, and maybe I, I mentioned it, if you hired this person next year, they would get six thousand dollars more if the, if the salary increase is put in. So yeah, it's, yeah, there'd be, they would, they would get five thousand out of us. I would say that they're, they're probably worth that to us.
And I certainly wouldn't question you there, but I, I know that most people that, that hand out incentives to hire, there's, there's rules with that, that they have to be there for so long and, you know, go into a probationary period and, and the, truck drivers, over the road truck drivers, I know that they have to perform for, for like two years before they get the bonus, they get a portion of it, but then they don't get the whole thing. So that, that kind of troubles me a little bit there. I'd still be in favor of the five thousand, but the, the, the retention incentive is, is an issue for me.
Mr. Sheriff, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
And basically, we receive inmate reports daily. The numbers out at county housing, the whole nine yards. And the last part of this list that we receive, twenty-one correction officers need to be hired with two additional over hires.
That's probably not right, I think it's sitting at seventeen right now. I think it's seventeen plus the two over hires if we were to have those, but.
But still, we need the bodies to man the new jail. And if this incentive is going to help that process, I'm all in favor of it.
I generally am in favor of it, just because I think we're almost in a crisis situation that maybe other departments aren't in. However, I am nervous about the precedent that we're setting that anytime that money is not spent on salaries in that department, that now that's money that's freed up that can be given for bonuses, you know, and that's just a, that makes me nervous. But this, this is a little bit different. Crisis maybe isn't the right word, but urgency probably tends me to lean towards okaying this.
Sheriff Solon, I just want to thank you for taking the time to discuss my questions in advance. But it's like, like that, I would not have been aware of why a five thousand dollars incentive to hire somebody for a corrections officer is the job that they provide nowadays. I'm thinking a correction officer is somebody that takes them from one place to another. The job that that correction officer has to do and provide to the county is unbelievable. I ju, I just was shocked to understand what that.
Yeah, they see things that most citizens would never dream.
Would never think of. And when we talk about a crisis situation, I look at it as that, I, I think if we as a county don't proceed with this to try and find a way to hire as many people as we can to staff this since you already have the monies available to do this position, the monies are there to, to implement this. If we don't do this, and, and to think here in another year that we're still fifteen, sixteen people down and we open up a brand-new jail and there's nobody to man it and, and we still are shipping people off to other places in the country to demand those. And, and I'm thinking, this right here is a, to me, is a, is a, is a perfect implementation of the funds available to me. And in discussing and working at the fair this weekend and discussing with some of the sheriffs. And because I asked the question is that, I, I don't think that, that they would want to take a five thousand dollar increase in pay to go back to correction officer.
No.
I'm, I'm just, so that's, thank you for, for your, looking at another avenue to try and find personnel.
Thank you.
I share the concerns of Commissioner Vidrickson also about the retention amount. But I also, I also know that the voters of Saline County went out and approved this jail and put a tax burden on themselves for, for twenty years or less to get this new jail built with the promise that we would get these inmates back to Saline County and bring that, that funding back into the county to be spent instead of out in other counties. And I, I think it behooves this commission to make sure that happens. So with that being said, I'll open it up to, unless anyone asks more questions, I'll open it up to the public for comment.
Well, I, I have one more comment, Mr. Chairman, if I could, but the, again, I, I am for the incentive. I, I've, I've had, I've had this documentation, this thing in front of me for less than twenty-four hours now. And I'm supposed to make a three hundred and sixty-five or three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar decision. And it just, the way it's structured right now, I, I'm, I'm still elected to look after the taxpayers' money. And I think this is, this is one that I need a little more time on, the way this is structured today than twenty hours or whatever, I've had this in front of me. So that's where I stand.
Okay.
I'll probably vote no as, on the, the way, because of the entire structure of this. But I'm not against the Sheriff's Department or the incentive. So, go ahead.
Duly noted. Public comment?
Rosemary Ma, Salina, Kansas, I agree with Commissioner Vidrickson. I think there should be a probation period instead of giving them the five thousand dollars right away when they're hired. Because I've noticed in different companies that once they're, they get the five thousand, they work for a while, they don't like the job and they quit. This has happened at Great Plains and they finally put a probation period on that. And I agree also with not making a decision right away because it is taxpayers' money. But I do think they need the money to get the help that they need to, to get on the new jail, so that's my opinion, thank you.
Like, I'll bring a question to the administrator. These funds, do they have to be spent in twenty twenty-two? Or can these funds be carried over to allow for a extended probationary time to, to, to spend these dollars? I mean, does it have to happen in this short window of time as proposed by the sheriff?
So the, the, the savings that the sheriff is proposing to use for these incentives are current year salary dollars that have not been spent. So those salary dollars would go away December thirty-first if they're not spent. And by go away, I mean they would be part of the general fund carryover into next year. I suppose we could construct a way to carry those over if that's the direction from the commission. Failing to think of an easy way to do that right off the top of my head, but I'm sure we could explore some options like putting it into a reserve account and, and drawing it back out in twenty twenty-three. I could have a conversation with the auditor about that. I will say, however, that sets a different kind of precedent for the future. I know that was a concern that was expressed by commissioners, so. Yeah, I guess I'll stop talking there.
Any other comments?
Well, to get something out there, and with the caveat that I am concerned about the precedent that we're setting for other, um, uh, departments, um, I, I do want that in the minutes at least. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the request to increase the current hiring incentive to $5,000 for correction officers hired through December 2022 and provide a $5,000 retention incentive for all current jail staff.
Second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let me get that here in front of me. That we approve RFA 175-22 Corrections Hiring Retention Incentive. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries, 3-2. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, item number two.
RFA 176-22 Stormwater Easement for Jail with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is, um, a jail item that's not gonna cost you money. How about that? Um, this is basically a cleanup item. There are a number of different easements that we need on the new jail site property in order to, um, have various utilities run to it. The first of those, uh, was for, uh, water and wastewater that we signed with, uh, the city of Salina earlier this year. The stormwater, uh, easement is also with the city of Salina. It was a little more complicated. So staff has been going back and forth for a number of months, but we finally have something that, um, is amenable to uh, everyone, uh, and, uh, so would recommend that we go ahead and ask the, uh, commission to delegate authority for the chairman to sign that and send it over to the city, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, this is outside, uh, Evergy's easement. I mean, this, is this addressing Evergy or is this other utilities?
This is addressing the stormwater from the city of Salina. Uh, the proposed Evergy easement, which we're still in discussions with Evergy about, I just sent their property rep an email this morning about that. Um, the Evergy easement would actually cross over the easement, um, but the Evergy's overhead poles, this is, uh, a depression in the ground to collect stormwater, so there's not a, a real on-the-ground conflict between the two.
Okay. So this is retention, wastewater retention. All right. Questions of the commission? Questions or comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
I move, um, we approve, as presented by staff, RFA 7, uh, 176-22.
Second.
All right, so we moved and seconded that we approve RFA 176-22 Stormwater Easement for the jail. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number three.
RFA 177-22 Architectural Services for Courtroom Remodel with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So we'll detour off of the jail property for just a moment and talk about the third floor of this building. As you know, we have some new judges that are coming, and so we are looking to remodel a couple spaces on the third floor of this building for new courtrooms, and in order to do that, we need to tap our American Rescue Plan funding. And so we need to make sure that we are correctly following, uh, all the purchasing procedures, which started with issuing a request for proposals for architectural firms to design, uh, the courtroom spaces. We received five proposals. Those were ranked according to the list of criteria specified in the RFP. And the top three firms were then invited in for interviews with myself, uh, the court administrator and the chief judge, and those, uh, that occurred, and then, um, at the end of that process, the three of us came to a unanimous recommendation that, uh, we, uh, recommend to your commission awarding, uh, Architectural Design Services Agreement to JGR Architects here in Salina. Uh, JGR was selected primarily based on the speed at which they could, uh, get the project, uh, accomplished. Uh, as you know, this is a, a situation where we don't have a lot of excess time. Uh, and so, um, it felt like they had really, uh, in their presentation, uh, done the best job of conveying that, and so, uh, that is the recommendation that we approve by signature the agreement with JGR for Architectural Design Services. It, based on the, the construction amount, likely construction amount, uh, we're talking about an architectural fee for JGR of just shy of a quarter million dollars. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, the scope of this project, is this third floor only, or does this incorporate, uh, getting the county, county attorneys moved and also, uh, the realignment of the county offices?
Um, that's a great question, Mr. Chairman. So this is strictly for the third floor. This agreement. We did also, um, enter into a separate agreement to have them draw up some plans for, uh, the room across the hall and, uh, room 217 as well. Um, those, we think are much, uh, smaller projects. Those basically just involve moving around wall partitions and making sure that we're not cutting off airflow and so forth. The, um, the courtrooms are a bigger deal architecturally, and also, um, because we are using the federal funding on the courtrooms, we want to make sure we're correctly dotting i's and crossing t's on that agreement and keeping that agreement separate from what we're doing with the other spaces in the building.
The, uh, fee agreement, I haven't seen it done this way before. Perhaps it has somewhere, but I just, uh, the 9%. Uh, I assume that the, other than JGR, the other firms quoted a, a set price, firm price, is that correct? Or did they go on a percentage basis too?
So the RFP process, we, um, did not ask for price quotes, cause you select based on the, um, ability of the firm to, deliver what you need rather than, than on price. Uh, this is a pretty standard, uh, architectural agreement. This is very similar to the one that we have with Trainer on the jail. Um, the percentage is slightly higher. This is a 9% fee. On the jail, it's 7.8%. But that's also a 7.8% of a $75 million construction budget versus a $2 million construction budget. So, um, feel that 9% is appropriate for this size of a project.
You know, I want to stress it again, uh, over, over and over again, that the, these are numbers that are forced upon us by the state. Mandated, uh, that we provide more courtrooms, uh, more judges, uh, but it's, they don't give us any money to do it with, so.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair, our court administrator's here. I wondered if he had any comments in regards to this, or? Sorry, Todd.
It's okay. Todd Heitchman, court administrator. I think the JGR, uh, my experience with them, I'll, I'll start off by saying the three firms we did interview, all of them were good. Um, the JGR, um, my, I'm more familiar with JGR. They did the, uh, room or the architectural design and everything with the juvenile courtroom. Um, that came out excellent, actually came in under budget than what we had, had budgeted for the project. So I'm in favor of JGR, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the JGR Agreement for Architectural Design Services for Courtroom Remodeling.
Second motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 177-22 Architectural Services for Courtroom Remodel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. I'll move on into informational item. Item number one.
Jail project update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Okay, back to the jail again. So this is the monthly update about the project status out at the jail. Uh, it is, uh, what I would characterize as a relatively exciting time for that project. We have walls going up. Uh, the precast, uh, walls, um, have started appearing at the end of July, so, I'm very excited to actually see it start looking like a building rather than just a collection of random, uh, concrete and steel. Uh, upcoming activities include completing a number of the block walls, um, making sure that the dayroom concrete slabs and the housing units, uh, get completed. Making sure that those, uh, precast panels, um, go up in all the different areas around the outside and, um, completing the site utilities, so. Um, we are, uh, on track with the project and, uh, as I said, a pretty, pretty exciting time out there. We approved a couple of, um, change orders, uh, so the change orders are not negative anymore, uh, but we do have another negative one coming, so, um, still not, uh, significant budget changes. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions of the administrator? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number two.
Aggregate discussion with Darren Fishel, administrator, and Justin Mater, county engineer, uh, with Rodenbridge.
As Darren and Justin are walking up, I'll just preface this by saying this, uh, comes out of the discussion that we had last week regarding, um, budget, and you had asked me to chat with, uh, Darren and Justin regarding the potential for, uh, spending additional funds on some, uh, smaller aggregate and spending less funds on other things within their budget, so we've had that conversation and wanted to, um, bring that back to the commission today.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, appreciate your interest in our procedures. You know, and, and looking at things at a whole, we have changed some procedures for the aggregates that we currently have. Right now, um, the instruction is for the motor grader operator to bit bar the, the top off the roadway, place the rock and then bring the sand over the top of it. And if that's not possible, then we sand it or cover the aggregate. Um, you know, when we started talking about this, um, probably four or five years ago, about the base aggregates in our roads and the need to improve them, we thought it'd take about four to five years, so I think this is really an appropriate time to really talk about where we go from here. So I just would like to say, um, you know, those having those three types of materials, um, are, are a bonus for our department. And I do believe that there's enough flexibility and, uh, adequate funding in the current proposed budget to accomplish these things.
Well, I guess I'll kick it off then.
Yeah.
I, I'm not opposed to, to the aggregate that was used. I'm, I'm opposed to the misuse of the aggregate. And I believe that is what happened. Once, once that product was covered or sanded, it, it made a, a great base. I drive that road daily. But before that, that time lapse,
Yes.
before it got done, was very damaging to, uh, to traffic. And I don't know, uh, I'll let Commissioner Vidrickson speak for himself. I don't know if, if the issues that, that he has been, uh, informed of, had the aggregate already been covered and the product still, uh, damaged the tires, or was this a, a lack of getting that aggr- aggregate worked into the base?
The instance you're talking about simply was, um, the aggregate didn't cover. And that was a procedure change that we made. That's where we went to. Um, every time that that aggregate goes out of our yard, there's either a load of sand behind it or very close to it, and, um, bit barring the road, creating some fine aggregates, moving that off to the side of the road, putting the rock down and then bringing the, the, uh, fine aggregates over the top of it.
And what was the timeline, Darren, uh, that that procedure was put into place?
That probably would have been three to four months ago.
Okay, that, that clears it up quite a bit if you want to know the truth of it, because, I mean, you mentioned four or five years ago, we started talking about this, which we did. Uh, most of my comments, uh, came, uh, eight months to, you know, 10 months ago, when this was really going strong. And if, and if that process and procedure has been changed, uh, as you've just indicated, uh, I would be satisfied with that, because I haven't had those calls in the last, uh, 90 days. So that would be more in line with your timeframe that you're, uh, just described.
And I do believe it is really time to, uh, evaluate those procedures. I don't think, believe in doing the same thing over and over again. And we do respond to, to criticisms and, uh, suggestions and, and make efforts to correct situations.
I know, I'm, I don't want to take a tool out of your toolbox.
I agree.
If that aggregate, and it, and it serves a purpose.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I buy into that, having that larger base rock down. But I, I would hope that we would be more proactive and not wait for criticism before we can change a procedure, but to, to think ahead of, this is a possibility, how do we address that prior to, um, letting it be a reaction, but be proactive about it.
I will say, you're correct, but one of the things that caught us off guard was the aggregate that, that we're getting this year. Although it isn't a different size than we've used the previous four years, it is considerably harder. And, and I think that's what led to the increase in phone calls and criticisms.
Now, this goes back, I mean, to last week, when, or I think it was last week, when we were discussing the budget. So as you're describing it, then this would not change the budget whatsoever. We would still stay with the same amount of
Correct, correct.
aggregate that we are purchasing.
Yes, it would just simply be, uh, you know, a listing and some procedure changes, you know? The larger aggregates we would use to rebuild roads, or when we have considerable rutting. And then always when we use the large aggregate, it'd be covered with a, a, a different, smaller type of surfacing material. And also, you know, when you, we, you talk about muddy roads, um, there's different levels of muddy road, you know, the ones that are rutting or just tore up, that's where you're gonna need the larger aggregates. But if you get some mud on a road, or just the surface is a little slicker or slimy, you know, that's where the, the three-quarter size type aggregate can come into play, and then sometimes it just needs a little bit of sand.
Well, you're, you're stating two things there that are satisfying to me, and that is procedurally, that you're gonna do things different and cover this rock with sand. And number two, I like the fact that you have, have observed it and agree that that material is hard.
It is.
Probably too hard. And I, I would hope that you could somehow or another address that with the, uh, the quarry. I, I don't know if there's, you know, when you, when you talk about steel as an example, which was my background, you know, you have a window that, uh, that you have to conform to when the testing comes in on, on that steel and what the grade of it is. Is there a procedure with, the same with rock, if it's an AB3, or is that? Is there a procedure with, the same with rock, if it's an AB3, or is that?
There is, there is, and that's quarry to quarry. You can't tell the quarry that you want softer aggregate, because it all comes out of the same hole, and there is a testing, and it's called an LA wear test, and you put it in a tumbler, and you put some steel balls in there, and then you tumble it for so long, and then you measure how much of that breaks down.
Does that have to be done through a chemical analysis?
It is, it's a state KDOT approved test, and most, every quarry does it.
They do that at the quarry?
Yes.
So.
And then they get KDOT to verify their results.
Okay, that's what I'm after right there, is that verification of what's going on, rather than a quarry telling you, hey, our stuff meets that standard, and you have no backup to that.
And so when we, when we open aggregate bids, which would be in December, and when we send out the requests for aggregates, we will include an SS3 and an SS5 in sand. And then we can discuss the hardness of the quarries and what to approve.
Darren, I think it might also be helpful for the commissioners and the public to talk a little bit about the conversation you and I and Justin had regarding how you actually spend your budget through the, it's one thing to set the budget number, but then you sort of adjust things around as you need it during the year, too.
Yes, yes, you know, our budget has an incredible amount of flexibility, and I'm just going to use an example as this year, okay? You know, fuel prices are astronomical. I plan on spending some of our aggregate budget on fuel. But the roads that we rebuilt this year, that didn't come out of the aggregate line item. That money came out of our one mill fund for road rebuilding. So when you look at our aggregate line item, we're probably only 5% to 10% usage at this time of the year. So we always have the ability to move dollars around. So if we get into this process yet, next year, we still have the funds, if the $200,000 is in the asphalt contract or not. We still have those dollars. Justin and I talk very well about where the department's at and what dollars we have, and at the end of the year, he'll usually let out an edge wedge shouldering project, and that's where we can kind of make up the differences and balance things.
Well, I don't, I don't, I am not an aggregate specialist, but I don't believe it's possible to get too hard of a base rock. I mean, is there a time you don't want hard base?
You know, sometimes, depending on the gradation and what your use is of it. I wouldn't want too hard of a base rock, but if you were, you run into some issues from time to time with rock. If you don't, if you get too soft of a rock, it turns to dust. If you get too hard of a rock, it cuts tires. So you really kind of have to find that fine balance. That's why we're looking at, when we send these bids out, they go to all the quarries, and we'll be able to look at what the hardness of the materials that we put on the top is. And too hard of a rock on a base is probably correct. You can't get too hard. But if you build a road without a hard-wearing surface such as asphalt or concrete, whatever you put down on the base, eventually it'll come up. That's where the rural patrolman needs to keep his eye on it, put sand on it when it needs it, or other surfacing material.
Any other commissioner comments?
Darren, could you bring us up to speed in regards to the windrow evaluation in two units? It might be interesting for.
You know, we're only a week into that. I was in Austin last week at the transforming local government, and then I got, have to, spent yesterday thinking about being here, so I really haven't had the time to unpack that, Mike.
Keep us up to speed, though.
I will.
And I applaud your efforts for attempting some, a couple test plots, so, thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that probably helped you get your budget ready for, okay.
Well, it certainly helps me get in line with the budget for Roden Bridge. Obviously, time will tell, if those procedures and quality of the rock works out, but right now, I'm satisfied with the answers that he gave us.
I think it's going to be helpful for us answering questions from the public, too, you know, complaints.
And now we have expectations of Roden Bridge about how it will be done.
Exactly, I mean, he told us what was going to happen, now we'll see what happens.
Yep.
He's the expert.
All right, we'll move on to item number three.
County administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Just a couple things to mention this morning. First off, the North Central Planning, or Central Regional Planning Commission is having their annual meeting with legislators. It will be later this month, the 25th, up in Ottawa County, and so Hannah Bett is our representative to that board, but she wanted me to make sure and extend this particular invitation to the commissioners. If any of you are interested in going and speaking with the legislative delegation, please let Hannah know, and she can get you additional details. The other thing is that the county clerk received notice from the property valuation division that our appraiser's office met their compliance standards for this year, and I forwarded that note to commissioners. So we, again, appreciate the work of the appraiser's office, and that's all I had for today.
Very good. Item number four.
Commissioners comments?
I will say that I received an invitation and, from X-Line Corporation, and attended their safety performance award that they were received from the federal government and OSHA. They're the only Kansas, they're, excuse me, they're the only one in Saline County that has ever received this award, and there are only 14 in Kansas over the years that have received, and I'm sorry that I can't recall what specifically what it's called, but is it certainly a safety award within the manufacturing for the size of company that they are. So I was happy to attend that, and there were some people there from the federal government and the state government and the federal OSHA people and so forth, and it was a very nice and well-deserved award.
Any other commissioners?
I just want to comment, I mean, I think the, it'll be interesting to hear from the expo people about how the fair went, because it was a, to me, it looked like it was not very well attended, but there wasn't a whole lot going on as far as food vendors, that type of thing, but it'll be interesting to see, I think there's, with the new fans and everything else in the buildings, that there's some new learning curves that was accomplished here during the fair, so. But anyway, it was a fun deal visiting with the people that did come through, the vendors, and it was an interesting situation, so. I want to thank everyone that did attend the fair for coming out, so.
All right, item number five.
Announcements.
Any announcements need to be made?
I would like to make a quick announcement. I just, and I didn't include this in my, the election canvas part, but I just want to say that I want to thank all of our election workers, I also want to thank a lot of our other departments that lend staff to us, as well as Roden Bridge, who helped deliver some of our polling locations, and also to my office, who, you know, we really couldn't, we work as a team so well and did a great job, and I really appreciate everyone that helped through this process, because I can't make it happen with, on my own, so I couldn't do it without the, all of them to help me. So I just want to thank everyone for that, because it's a lot of work, a lot of 50 to 75 hours a week is what we've been working for the last month, six days a week, and they've really been troopers and helped make this all happen, so I just wanted to say a thank you to everyone, so.
Very good. And I just have a quick question here, since this is all over. Why is it, or can we go back to having less number of precincts and all of this other? I mean, from the increase in numbers, what does it take to go back to fewer precincts?
The precincts are determined based on the different district lines, so there's a difference between precincts and voting locations, so we have the same number of voting locations. We just have an additional amount of precincts based on redistricting, so there isn't, that 'll happen in 10 years from now, when we have redistricting again. So anytime there's population change, you have to put, you know, you have your county commission districts, you have your Kansas House districts, townships, all of those kind of lay on top of one another and deter, draw each precinct out. So I don't think, I don't foresee that anytime soon, then, 97. So the 97 precincts we have now, that's just kind of where we're at, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You adjourn.